Good evening and welcome to tonight's public hearing. This hearing will include Columbus City Council's Health and Human Services, Finance, and Workforce Development Committees. I'm Councilmember Priscilla Tyson, President Pro Tem of Columbus City Council and Chair of these committees. Before we begin, please be aware that this hearing is being recorded for rebroadcast on CTV, the Columbus Government Television Channel 3. The rebroadcast schedule is available at www.columbus.gov. This hearing is one of a series of bi-weekly committee hearings that I hold in order to review legislation in the committees that I chair. This includes Health and Human Services, Finance, and the Workforce Development Committees. The goal of these hearings is to promote transparency and provide an opportunity for city residents to learn and speak on legislation that impacts their lives. There will be on occasion when a committee is not covered because legislation is not always scheduled for each committee. The intent of each hearing is to review legislation that will be on city council's agenda for the following two weeks. Tonight, we will hear information on legislation in the Finance and Human Services Committees. Presenters this evening include from Finance, from the Treasurer's Office, Talia Brown, the Deputy Treasurer, from the Auditor's Office, Robert McDaniel, the Deputy Auditor, and Melinda Frank, the Income Tax Administrator, and also from Finance and Management, Christopher Long, our Fiscal Manager, from Health and Human Services Committee, from the Department of Development, Hannah Jones, who's Deputy Director of Community Development, from Columbus Public Health, Dr. Teresa Long, our Health Commissioner. I will now begin with legislation in the Finance Committee and ask Deputy Treasurer Talia Brown to present legislation from her office. After Talia Brown will be Robert McDaniel and Melinda Frank, and then we are going to let Dr. Teresa Long present, and then we'll come back to the Finance Committee. So with that, I am going to turn the floor over to our Deputy Treasurer, Talia Brown. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Tyson. The Treasurer's Office has one piece of legislation coming before council in September. This ordinance number is 2310-2017. It authorizes the city treasurer to modify its contract for citywide e-payment services with First Data Government Solutions to authorize the expenditure of up to $146,500 from various funds within the city and to declare an emergency. And a little way of background for this ordinance, in March of 2015, the Treasurer's Office issued an RFP for citywide e-payment services. 139 vendors were contacted and three proposals were received. They were reviewed by the Columbus Depository Commission, which recommended the award of e-payment services to First Data Government Solutions beginning in January of 2016. Our contract covers a period of 10 years, beginning March 2, 2016 through March 1, 2026, and is subject to annual appropriations and approval of contracts by Columbus City Council. Earlier this year, in February, we had ordinance number 276-2017. The city Treasurer's Office modified a contract for the second year of e-payment services, and now we wish to provide additional funding for e-payment services for the Departments of Public Utilities, Building and Zoning, and the Department of Public Safety, Fire Division.
Thank you, Deputy Treasurer Brown, and just excited that more and more of our departments are using this service. And I don't know, are there any other departments that are still out there that aren't using the service?
Well, yes, there are, unfortunately, but on 8/21, Fire Division launched their online payments, and so far, it's been pretty successful, so we're really excited about that. And upcoming, the city Treasurer's Office will start taking payments for some of the smaller divisions that need to have those services provided. So we're still in process, but we're pretty excited about that because this is something we didn't have in the past, and we want to expand and make it easier for the citizens.
Thank you. Thank you for your leadership of yourself, as well as your treasurer in this regard. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now, we will hear from the Auditor's Office, Mr. Robert McDaniel.
Good evening, President Pro Tem Tyson. Tonight, I have one resolution, 0223X-2017. This is to accept the rates given to us by the county, of which we did previously the 2018 tax budget, so this is the final step for that process. This is just to accept the rates that they agreed to, of which we gave them.
And just to make sure that our viewing and listening audience know that we are not increasing our...
There is no increase to property taxes whatsoever.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And we will now hear from Melinda Frank, the Income Tax Administrator.
Good afternoon, President Pro Tem Tyson.
Good evening.
The Income Tax Division has two pieces of legislation on the upcoming council agenda for consideration. 2206-17 seeks the authorization of the expenditure of $31,136.25 for software support and maintenance related to the second phase of the Division's e-file application for individual taxpayer filers. This service is provided for within the scope of the development agreement with Specialized Business Software, or SBS, as our software has been developed and designed specifically for the purpose of serving Columbus taxpayers, as well as interfacing with the income tax workflow application, which allows members of the audit staff to do the majority of their work without paper. SBS is the sole source for providing this service. Our application has been well-received, as reflected by our users. At the close of 2016, 963 individual taxpayers had used that application, making total payments of $480,971. At the close of last month, 162 taxpayers have used the application and submitted payments totaling $520,741. So we're making progress in getting out to those individual taxpayers. Phase 2 of the development has enabled our taxpayers to upload documents and to append items to their filings, and keeping in mind that not only do we have taxpayers using our application that are making payments, but they are making filings that may not call for payments. And I do want to distinguish this e-file, e-pay application from what the Treasurer's Office has entered into with First Data Government Solutions, as well as our First Data Government Solutions contract that provides for the e-pay and e-filing of employer withholding returns, which is tremendously successful. Our second piece of legislation is 2218, 2017, and seeks the authorization to modify and extend a contract with ComputerAid, Inc. This entity was originally sourced through a State of Ohio term contract, and the original contract with ComputerAid provided for the original contract term previously authorized, as well as two additional one-year term extensions. And this is the second of those extensions. And through this contract, we have been placed with us a business systems analyst. She's provided valuable services to the nature of analysis of the Division's policies, procedures, and operations, in addition to its interactions with other departments and divisions within the city to ensure effectiveness and efficiency. And funding for this expenditure has been included within our 2017 budget.
Thank you. I can I go back to 2206 for just a second? So I know, can you just talk about who the users are that would be using this e-file platform?
They are individual filers, people who maybe have Schedule C income, people who are not withheld by their employer. So these are individuals who have quarterly declaration filings that are required in payments themselves. So they represent, in the overall collections for the city, about 5% of our overall collections. But these, I hesitate to say this, but they are our neediest taxpayers. They need the most support, they need the most assistance, and the most help. And we are providing this to them and trying to make the process as simple as possible for them, so that it's an easy click, 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 and they can go ahead, file their returns, upload documents, and then make payments to accompany those filings if necessary.
Thank you, and certainly, just by giving the numbers you've given today, our residents are certainly finding that, obviously, it's easier to use since the numbers have increased, or they've heard more about it and are more willing to be able to pay their taxes using this e-file.
We are easy to use, and we're far easier to use than the State of Ohio application. So we're very pleased about that.
Thank you so much. All right, so next, we will hear from out of Health and Human Services, our Health Commissioner, Dr. Teresa Long. Good evening.
Good evening, Council Chair Tyson, and happy Back-to-School Day. So I hope that you've had a good August. I have seven items to present to you, and then one informational item as well. So the first item, for your consideration, the committee's consideration, and that will, we hope, be on the council agenda, is actually one that was presented before, but it's been a bit of time, so we thought we'd bring it back. And that is to accept and appropriate the Moms Quit for Two Grant for 2017-18, its ordinance 2010-2017. And these are funds, $63,533, that we are receiving from the Ohio Department of Health that allows us to continue our Moms Quit for Two project in our Women's Health and Family Planning Center. It's an evidence-based smoking cessation program for pregnant women. We've actually had very good success with that, and while we wish we had received more money, we asked for more, they actually did not give us as much as we had asked, though we understand they like it a lot, so we may hear some more money could come our way. We hope so. But again, according to the data, we have a smoking problem among Ohio moms, and in Franklin County, 23.5% of our WIC recipients are moms, smoked while they were pregnant. So again, we know in some of our suburbs, not suburbs, in some of our zip codes, we actually have much higher smoking rates. So we're very interested in smoking cessation, both in educating and supporting women who want to stop smoking while they're pregnant in achieving that. So these funds will allow us to do that.
Thank you, Dr. Long. Certainly, looking at the results since its inception, that you had, I think in 2016, 23 prenatal session graduates and 23 had healthy babies in 2016, and 87% of those have remained smoke-free in the postpartum period, and that these babies that were born to these moms weighed more than five pounds. And so, just appreciative of this program. Certainly, this is important for us to ensure that our babies certainly live past their first birthdays, and you know smoking can cause SIDS, and so we are just very thankful to get these dollars, and thank you for the work that your team is doing in order to ensure that we're focused on Celebrate One, our babies living past their first birthday. Thank you.
That's exactly right. The next item, and we'll come back to a couple of items related to that work as well, but the next item, ordinance 2169-2017, is to accept and appropriate the Central Ohio Trauma Systems Coalition Grant to us at Columbus Public Health. These are funds that we have accepted, they're very small in the amount of $4,000, but the Centers for Disease Control requires the grantee in our region, which is the Central Ohio Trauma System, to have a partner or to do it themselves to coordinate healthcare organizations around emergency planning and response. The Central Ohio Trauma System has asked us if we would convene the coalition, so indeed, we are willing to convene the Franklin County Healthcare Coalition, which is a group of hospitals and long-term and short-term care organizations, hospices, home health agencies, dialysis centers, to have them be a part of our planning for any kind of emergency and medical emergency response system. So again, it's a small amount of money, but it's a very important, we think, connecting of our different organizations in our community.
Thank you, Dr. Long, and how long has this partnership been going on with FCHC?
So, that's a very good question. We actually, we were just going down memory lane, one of your speakers coming up. We actually have coordinated the Metropolitan Medical Response System since 1995. However, this is a subset of that, and it got more specific, and that's only really been a requirement for the last three years. So indeed, these funds, and again, very small, but these funds have broadened, and actually, it's a committee of our larger Metropolitan Medical Response System that you have joined us in on occasion. So this is very focused, again, both hospitals, but on the long-term care, the hospice, home health agencies, some of the pharmacies and dialysis centers that wouldn't normally be connected to our larger community effort around emergency planning and response.
Well, there's certainly, because it's not a large sum of money, but this is important work, and we hope that there's never an emergency in our community, but if there ever was, that we are certainly working with all these organizations to ensure the health of our residents, and to seeing what's going on, you know, with Hurricane Harvey, and it's pretty devastating to see the individuals in wheelchairs, out of the hospitals, dialysis, just watching, when a traumatic event happens in a community, how do you move residents, and then you think about even the aftermath of how do you get medicine to people, and just all that's going on in that, in a community. And so, just very happy that we are working together, so if an emergency ever happened in our community, that we know that we're well-prepared.
We do, and we don't want to meet people for the first time during the emergency, so this is really helpful to be connecting ahead of time.
Thank you.
So the next item is to, its ordinance 2104-2017, to accept and appropriate the Safe Routes to School Grant Project. These are funds, $18,000, from the Ohio Department of Transportation for non-infrastrucure. They actually sadly cut our grant and did not have funds to support a safe routes to school. However, we have figured out some ways to do that through our budget process coming into 2017. So indeed, we will connect this project to our Safe Passages Program. We have a new staff member, Catherine Swodarski, who is heading that, and these funds will allow us, hold on, I have new information because it wasn't in there, and I knew you'd want to know this. So this will allow us to focus on the Safe Porches Pilot Project up in the Linden neighborhood, specifically working with the Hamilton and Windsor STEM Academies, and allow us to identify and work with residents around priority corridors in the Linden neighborhood for safe walking routes to school, as well as then to identify signage and promotional materials for families so they know where are the safe passages. So we're, of course, looking forward to working with them. We have a couple of other small projects connected to it, so we know that about 7,000 students and their families will be impacted by this.
Yeah, certainly appreciate the partnership with the schools in the Linden community.
Exactly, exactly. Thank you. The next is a large project. It's to accept and appropriate funds from Franklin County's Department of Job and Family Services, its ordinance 2264. These are funds that will support both Columbus Public Health, but our mayor, and really our community's movement around infant mortality, the Celebrate One project. So the Job and Family Services had some TANF funds they wanted to make available, so $700,000 coming from, originally, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, will come to Columbus Public Health, and will be joined by some general fund funds from Franklin County Job and Family Services of $250,000, adding up to this larger number of $950,000 that we're hoping that council will accept and appropriate. So let me explain a little bit about what the funds are for. They would run for the project period, August 23, 2017, through September 30, 2018, and clearly, this is about the well-being of our infants. A major portion is around safe sleep, which you just mentioned. We want every child, and every infant, and every parent and caregiver to understand the ABCs of safe sleep, alone, on your back, and in an empty crib. And so, a new media campaign has just been produced and actually just rolled out. It should reach a million residents with its educational information about how to sleep your baby safely. It's entitled "Real People, Real Stories," because we actually have three of our community residents telling their stories. We've already gotten a little bit of feedback, people saying, "Wow, you caught my attention." So that really is important to us. We know that there are many people who still do not know about the ABCs of safe sleep. So again, we're very appreciative for the county in making such funds available. We also will take $250,000, the general fund monies, and place those through Celebrate One to work on the neighborhood initiatives in two of our priority neighborhoods, both the Franklinton area and the Hilltop communities. And so there, as we have done in the other neighborhoods, in our Phase 1 neighborhoods, we will be working with residents and identifying the key issues that residents and community entities in that area want to work on that will enhance family well-being and infant well-being. And so then, an agency in each one will be identified, and there will be staffing and support of the projects that the residents and those agencies determine. So again, $125,000 would be allocated to each of those neighborhoods. But all of it rolled up is a large project coming to the city from our partners at Franklin County Job and Family Services.
Thank you, Dr. Long, and just appreciative of our partners working with us from the county to provide additional dollars in order for us to ensure that our babies are living past their first birthday, as we just mentioned, and important about the ABCs of sleeping, but also the work in Franklinton and the Hilltop, because as we've talked about, not only with infant mortality, but also just in the health of our communities, what tried to improve our social and economic conditions in those neighborhoods, and dealing with the social determinants of people's health. So I'm very thankful that we are now moving into Franklinton and the Hilltop. I know that we're in the Linden area, we're on the south side, and we've got some legislation about the south side in a little bit in a few minutes, and certainly, I'm on the near east side, so just appreciate the work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Then, we are going to take some of those funds that, if they get approved and allocated, to authorize a contract with these, again, with these funds for media buys through the Saunders Company, LLC. And so again, the date of this to run would be September 1, 2017, through September 30, 2018, and the amount on the contract would be $397,910. And again, this was advertised through the vendor services portal and met the bidding requirements, et cetera. So we are very excited. You likely know Gail Saunders, and again, she has been absolutely committed to get this campaign right where it needs to be to impact families.
Thank you, Dr. Long, and so I know she's doing this safe sleep media buy, but maybe you could provide some information, if you have it today, as to who's producing the commercials for the buy.
So the commercials have been created, it's been a partnership, actually, between Gail Saunders and the Saunders Company and Paul Worth. Many, many, many focus groups, actually, our CPH staff are very involved in this as well. So it's really been a key partnership, along with, obviously, Celebrate One's leadership. So key partnership, and with our residents, having three of them step forward has been amazing, and so having them be able to be the real people telling their stories. But again, that's how the production of the campaign has occurred.
Thank you very much.
The next item is very straightforward. It really is to authorize a change order with Tyler Technologies. This would allow our Board of Health to change an order in our contract with Tyler Technologies for the Dynamics, or DAX, Financial Management System, for $16,630. Many of us among the city family know the DAX system. What this would allow us to do is to modify our relationship and to cover hardware implementation costs of implementing the cashier module. We really would like to be able to do that, it'll keep everything straight. So again, we look forward to both working with our city colleagues, but clearly with the folks who make DAX happen.
Thank you.
And then finally, to accept and appropriate the funds for the Maternal and Child Health Grant for this year, its ordinance 2348-2017, and this is flat funding coming to us via the Ohio Department of Health, from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, though we will take $312,184 anytime. So this will allow us to continue, it feels small, but nonetheless, every penny really matters in our fight around the health of women and children. So in particular, this project funds, or partly funds, some of our safe sleep programming. It also funds our Healthy Children, Healthy Weights Project, in part, which you're very familiar with, is about improving the health and well-being through policies and system change in our early childhood education centers. And it will support a transportation assessment that we look forward to contracting with Morpsy to do around how women get safely to and from our WIC sites, as part of a project trying to look at our safe transportation in our Celebrate One neighborhoods. We hope to broaden that. It also partly supports our fetal infant mortality review and the Columbus, Ohio Equity Institute Project, which again, has been our pilot initiative on the very far south, well, in '06 and '07, for a lot of our infant mortality work. So again, it's lots of pieces, but all of these pieces add up to an important whole.
Thank you, Dr. Long. These are, as I used to say, these are very important pieces. Excited about the transportation assessment work that will, with this contract with Morpsy. I think that's really important, because we certainly know it's difficult for our women to be able to get back and forth from their appointments, and this will be very important. Also, just always excited about the work that you've been doing around the fetal infant mortality review and the casework that, I missed this year, but I was at the very first years, the end-of-the-year program, and just to see the individuals in your team that have reached out to these bereaved families and conduct interviews with them about the death of their children, is to help us to make sure that moving forward, anything that we can do health-wise to prevent those deaths is important. So thank you for your work.
Absolutely, and I know you're with us on this. Let me finally make mention, because it's all over our place, but not all over the city, this coming weekend is the Hot Times Festival. The Hot Times Festival is a music and arts community festival that happens to happen on the Columbus Public Health grounds at 240 Parsons Avenue. So this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, Friday starting at 5:00, and then Saturday and Sunday starting at noon until, I think midnight, actually, on Saturday, and I think until 8:00 PM. There will be lots of music, lots of good food, lots of art. I think they have the largest car art project in the country. So stay tuned, or look forward someplace, but there should be some interesting-looking cars pulling up at 240 Parsons Avenue. So of course, we're welcoming anyone who would like to come to the Hot Times Festival.
Thank you for that announcement, Dr. Long. All right, thank you. And our next presenter, because they have one piece of legislation this evening, is going to be from Hannah Jones, from the Department of Development. Well, I'll let her, and then after that, we're going to make sure, you know, finance always goes first, and I've been making exceptions all along for everybody. So I want you to know, Chris, that I will not continue to put finance at the end, you're always first on the agenda, okay? So but today, you know, we're just getting back, we're going to, maybe we have some guests in the room, we're going to allow them to, I'm going to let Ms. Hannah Jones present tonight, and then we'll come to you, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Tyson, and we all understand and know who runs the finances, so we appreciate any time that Department Finance is willing to give us all a chance to. Excuse me. Tonight, for your consideration, I have one ordinance, 2285-2017, and while I describe it, I would like to invite Rick Davis, who serves as the Chief Operating Officer for Lutheran Social Services, to the podium. This ordinance, for your consideration this evening, is to allocate $500,000 to Lutheran Social Services in support of their new shelter that they are currently going to be undertaking. This will be to replace the existing facility that they have. In the end, this facility will be 46,530 square feet and house 120 residents and provide a safe space for those who are leaving a domestic violence situation. And I will turn it over to Rick to give you more details. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Hannah.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm wonderful, thank you.
Good, and good to be back here. I'm Rick Davis, I'm the Chief Operating Officer with Lutheran Social Services, and talking to you tonight about our request for $500,000 for the new Choices building. You've been to Choices, you've seen the building, I know you've toured it. The current facility is overcrowded, worn out, outdated, you name it, and we're really excited with the success we've had with the capital campaign towards building this new 46,000-square-foot building. And our hope is that we'll be able to break ground yet this year. In fact, in November, right now, is looking like the official groundbreaking. We've had the public groundbreaking, but now the actual moving of dirt will begin in November of this year. A much larger building, obviously, room for 120 people, room for further expansion as well, private apartments. private apartments. You know, the families that come into Choices, obviously, are dealing with a lot of trauma. And our current situation, at least the residents are safe, but it's certainly not the dignified approach that Lutheran Social Services knows that these clients require. We're also going to be including a kennel as part of this project, which I think is kind of cool. We've found unfortunately that pets often become negotiating chips for folks as they're trying to decide what they're going to do. So having that kennel, I think, is very significant. We're also going to have a very large play area for kids of multiple age groups, a lot of green space, a lot of just quiet area also that, that folks can go and just kind of try to relax. We'll have resource centers and multiple other things to help people get back on their feet and find jobs if necessary, and certainly find housing as well. We have requested a total of $1 million, $500,000 this year from the city funds. That will go towards the site acquisition of, of the location where we plan to build. And we're hopeful of coming back and having more conversations related to the sanitary sewer in next year's budget. So I guess in closing, I just want to say thank you to you and for your interest and involvement. You've seen firsthand, as I just said, but I know you have a very personal interest in this, and we appreciate it. We certainly appreciate the support the City of Columbus has given to Lutheran Social Services in the past for Choices and for many of our other shelter and food programs. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Greg, for coming down. I'm certainly excited about the opportunity to have a facility that is certainly worthy of the individuals who are coming into your space. Yes, I have visited your current location and certainly know that, you know, you're doing the very best you can with kind of the resource that you have right now. But certainly as a community, I know that that's unacceptable for the community. And that's why I do believe that, after I had my initial conversation with the team from Lutheran Social Services, thought that this would certainly be a great use of the dollars that the, for the city to participate in. Just, you know, thinking about having a facility that could host, house up to 120 residents, even though we wish we didn't have to have a facility like this, but that's not the case. And so we need to make sure that we have a facility that could, that could house women and men.
Absolutely, and children, obviously.
And, and children based upon the domestic violence that happens within our community. And you're absolutely right. I'd put a note down before you mentioned it, you know, the importance of having a place that our pets could come to. I mean, we, again, hate to keep talking about Hurricane Harvey, but certainly just seeing that, how we were, become a wiser nation to realize that how pets are, pets are part of family, are families too, and that we need to make sure that those pets get to travel with us. And so being insightful to have a, a new facility that will allow, have kennels for the pets to be there. And again, you know, the play area and the quiet area is so important. And I'm sorry that, you know, your, your break, you broke ground when many of us, when council was on break, because certainly...
Yeah, we could have planned that a little bit.
Yeah, we would have enjoyed participating in that. So just hopeful when we, when's the building going to be completed? What's the timeline?
We're looking right now at about an 11-month construction period. So assuming we can mobilize in November, and there's still some questions around that. You've got winter weather coming and whatever, but if we can't, I would expect realistically we'd be open before the holidays in 2018.
Okay. Well, thank you. So all right, so just, and don't forget about council. We certainly are, appreciate the work that you're doing there and certainly want to participate in the opening of that new facility, because we think it's just, it's so, it's instrumental into moving our community forward. And just real pleased that we were able to put the $500,000 in for the, for the site acquisition. And it's in a great location, actually. It's quiet there. And I'm sure the neighborhood around it is a welcoming neighborhood and so...
It's going to bring a lot of additional potential for the neighborhood with the sanitary sewer and whatever. It really could create some additional development opportunity, which obviously is good for Columbus, in particular, that area. So I think that's an exciting kind of side benefit of this.
Thank you very much. I look forward to presenting this piece, this legislation to my council colleagues and their support of Choices. And certainly want to do everything we can to get individuals out of situations that are harmful to them and their families and move them toward, to improve their quality of life. So thank you for the work that you do.
Again, thank you for your interest.
Thank you. And now, from our fiscal manager, Mr. Chris Long. The floor is yours.
Good evening, President Protam Tyson. This evening, we have 14 ordinances to present that we hope to have on the September 11th and September 18th city council agendas. Our first ordinance for this evening is ordinance 1270-2017. And this seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to establish a universal term contract with Kurtz Brothers for the purchase of Topsoil to be primarily used by the Department of Public Utilities.
Thank you.
Our second ordinance is ordinance 1854-2017. This seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to establish a universal term contract with Riley and Associates for the purchase of HVAC parts primarily used by the Department of Recreation Parks.
Thank you very much.
The next ordinance, ordinance 2051-2017, seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to establish universal term contracts with Southeastern Equipment, Absolute Innovations, and Gregory Industries under the sole source provisions of Columbus City Code for the purchase of vehicle parts and equipment to be utilized primarily by our Fleet Management Division.
And are these sole source contracts in line with the sole source provisions in our purchasing code?
Yes, they are. And they would be used, there are certain equipment that requires original equipment, manufacturing parts. In other words, in order not to void warranties, we don't like to swap out, you know, knockoff parts, if you will. So these three vendors supply original equipment, manufacturing parts for fleet-specific equipment.
Thank you.
Our next ordinance, ordinance 2106-2017. This seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to modify past, present, and future contracts and purchase orders with Old Dominion Brush Company. Old Dominion was acquired by a company by the name of Alamo Group. And so they had a change in their federal tax ID number. And so in order just to, you know, keep operations fluid, this just seeks authority to honor previous contracts.
Thank you.
Our next ordinance, ordinance 2146-2017, is very similar. This seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to modify past, present, and future contracts and purchase orders with Evaku Water Technologies. Very similar to the previous ordinance, there was a federal tax ID number change. This seeks that authority.
Thank you.
Ordinance 2175-2017 is the next ordinance. This seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to enter into a universal term contract with Travco for the rental of construction equipment primarily used by the Division of Sewer and Drainage.
So I have a question on this one. Is this something that the city has done before, establishing a UTC for construction rental equipment?
I'm sorry, have we done this before? Is this the first time? I'll have to check on that. I, I think we have done this before, but I can check with our purchasing office and let you know.
You could also, maybe you could, maybe you know the answer to this, but certainly renting it, this equipment, obviously, can you share, is more cost-effective than having to purchase, I'm sure, this piece of equipment?
I believe so, but once again, just to make sure I get you the right information, I'll confirm that, you know, how many times these types of universal contracts have been established? And then what the cost benefit is for us renting it versus purchasing it long-term?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance 2208-2017 is our next ordinance. This seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract for the purchase of ultra-low sulfur diesel, biodiesel, and non-road diesel fuel with benchmark biodiesel. The primary user of this universal term contract would be our Fleet Management Division for the fueling of city vehicles.
Thank you. Can you just share with the viewing and listening audience how much fleet budgeted for diesel fuel in 2017? And, and what our experience has been this year with regard to those expenses?
Sure. We traditionally budget somewhere in the neighborhood of about $2 million each year for the utilization of diesel fuel. Over the last several years, with the adoption of our compressed natural gas program, which you, President Protam Tyson, have been very supportive of, and we thank you, we've seen our diesel utilization slowly trend downward. We're very happy about that. We think that will continue. And so we're hopeful that, you know, the 2018 budget will show a smaller utilization, and each year after that will show smaller utilization.
Thank you very much. Great.
Ordinance 2220-2017 is our next ordinance. This seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to enter into a universal term contract for street name sign brackets with MD Solutions, with the Division of Public Service being its sole user.
Thank you. And the estimated expenditure is about $200,000 for this, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Our next ordinance is very similar in that it also authorizes the Finance and Management Director to enter into universal term contracts with Pathmaster Incorporated and Gudenkauf Corporation for the purchase of traffic sign communication system equipment for utilization primarily by our Division of Public Service.
Thank you. And again, that's estimated amount, annual expenditure is $200,000.
That is correct.
Thank you.
The next ordinance, 2229-2017, seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to establish various purchase orders for automotive parts, supplies, and services for the Fleet Management Division per the terms and conditions of previously established universal term contracts. This is our second request of council to fund the utilization of these parts and service UTC's, President Protam Tyson. It's just that fleet usually spends between four and a half and $5 million a year on parts and another million and a half on services. And so we don't always seek for the full spending appropriation early on in the budget year. We kind of see how things trend out, and then we ask for a second wave of appropriation, if you will, later on in the year. And so this is kind of our second request for the ability to buy bulk parts and services.
That being said, are we in line with our expectations for this year regarding spending on parts and services?
We are. We don't anticipate needing any additional funds that were originally budgeted for parts and services.
Thank you.
Ordinance 2251-2017 is our next ordinance. This seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to establish purchase orders from previously established universal term contracts for the purchases, for the purchase, excuse me, of automobiles, light-duty trucks, and associated vehicle upfitting parts and services to be used by various city departments, and also to establish purchase orders with Par Public Safety, ESIC Corporation, Caff and Barker Truck Equipment, Advantage Sign Supply, and Rock, Rocks Trailer for the purchase of vehicles and associated vehicle upfitting. This is essentially our second, or wave two, of our citywide vehicle acquisitions this year that our Fleet Management Division is administering on behalf of the city. I can share this detailed list with your office, President Protam Tyson. I apologize, I didn't get it to you before this hearing, but it lists out all the vehicles we're buying. They're largely on behalf of refuse development and then a fleet service truck. And then the upfitting services are largely on behalf of the Department of Public Safety, meaning upfitting previously purchased police and fire vehicles.
Thank you. And so then the upfitting of things like, you know, lights, the radios, the anti-idlers, the decals, and those type of things, is that correct?
Yes, that is.
Okay. Now finances budgeted $7 million in vehicles for this, this year, which was higher than previous years. So can you talk a little bit about the additional dollars that we're using for our vehicles this year?
Sure. I know the buy plan, if you will, is still somewhat in flux in that the hope was to spend a good portion of the $7 million this year on electric vehicles in connection with our smart, larger Smart Cities program. That is still being worked through our purchasing office, the acquisition of those vehicles. And so we're hopeful that that will still happen this year. If, for reasons through purchasing, that we cannot get that established, I have yet to be fully aware of what we use those additional funds for as of this time.
And so if we're not able to purchase those electric vehicles this year, then we could carry over the funds to be able to purchase those vehicles next year?
There, yes. There would, there'd be a decision by council and obviously administration as to how to handle those additional unused funds. My understanding is that special income tax funds can be carried over, but that would obviously involve our city auditor as well and kind of a conversation among all three parties.
But, but the key is we really want to buy electric vehicles this year?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Ordinance 2268-2017 is our next ordinance. This seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to enter into a universal term contract for the option to purchase Sensit P400 gas monitors with, with Firecraft Safety Products LLC for the Division of Fire being its primary user.
Thank you. And this is important equipment. We'd be, constantly, certainly want to make sure that before any of our individuals who are firefighters are going into dangerous situations, that these gas monitors are important so that they can remain health, can stay healthy. So, thank you.
Our next ordinance, ordinance 2279-2017, seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to renew and modify an existing contract with KNS Services Incorporated. This would be for the purchase of security cameras, related video storage equipment, and the wiring and infrastructure needed to maintain those. And these would be for all city buildings and facilities managed under the purview of our Facilities Management Division.
This also includes the, the new Michael B. Coleman Building?
It does.
Okay. Thank you. And I know that KNS has been doing some work at the courthouse. Is this also including at the courthouse, too?
It could potentially, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Our last ordinance for this evening is ordinance 2309-2017. And this seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to establish universal term contracts with International Truck Parts and services with Rush Truck Centers of Ohio and Hile Environmental Parts, and with Bell Equipment in accordance with the sole source provisions of Columbus City Code. These would also be for specialized fleet vehicle equipment that's needed for specific city vehicles.
Thank you. And this UTC would be for $250,000. And certainly just want to always support, you know, support Kelly Regan and our, and our Fleet Management Division for all the work that they do in keeping our equipment in working order and buying the parts that we need, which is also, they're always focused on saving us money, but also making sure that we have all the right parts. So, so thank, I always say thank you to Kelly and his team. And thank you very much, Mr. Long.
Thank you.
All right. All right. So, and I hope this evening's hearing has provided insight into the programs and community initiatives from Columbus Public Health and, and the Department of Development, as well as finance-related legislation as necessary to support our ongoing city operations. As residents, these hearings are an opportunity for you to learn and become engaged in issues that are presented. I like, I would like to thank this evening's presenters. From the Treasurer's Office, Talia Brown, Deputy Treasurer. From the Auditor's Office, Robert McDaniel, the Deputy Auditor, and Melinda Frank, Income Tax Administrator. From Finance and Management, Chris Long, our Fiscal Manager. From the Department of Development, Hannah Jones, Deputy Director of Community Development. From Columbus Public Health, Dr. Teresa Long, our Health Commissioner. I also have to always thank our city council's Legislative Research Office, especially Michael Kessler, who's in council chambers this evening, who leads the Legislative Research Office. Matt Erickson, who staffs Finance Committee. Alexis Pennell, who staffs the Health and Human Services Committee. Nancy Prior Sully, who is part of our city council's engagement team and does a fantastic job serving the residents on the south side of our commu, of our city. My staff, Nicole Harper and Carl Williams, the hard-working team at CTV who make these hearings possible. And last but not least, the residents of Columbus who make our city the best place in the country to live, work, and to raise a family. Thank you very much, and this hearing is adjourned.